Good evening, everyone. Today is June 10th, 2025. The time is 6:05, and this is the Cushing Lane Planning Board. Can I get a motion to open the planning board meeting?
Motion to open the meeting. Tom Segal.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
This meeting was originally supposed to be on June 5th. The planning board had to cancel, and then it's been rescheduled to today, June 10th. This meeting is being recorded for future viewing on the town's YouTube page, cable channel, and we are live via Teams. We have a call-in tonight. Can we introduce ourselves, please?
Victoria Alvaro, town planner.
Peter Gaiappa, member.
Mark Francois, chairman.
Ryan DeChamps, member.
Rick Ellis, vice chairman.
And our fifth member might show up a little later. Everybody was sent the minutes to the May 1st meeting. Did we all have a chance to take a quick look? Everybody was there except Rick. This was that relatively quick meeting, I think it was.
To make a motion to approve the 5-1 2025 meeting minutes estimate.
I second that.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving right along. This is an informal meeting. 72 Middle Road, map 24 lot 35. Applicant slash owner, MD South Coast Properties LLC. Representative is David DeVignan with Schneider, DeVignan &amp; Leoni Inc. The scope of the work is the development of an 425 duplex, 12 units tour. Mr. DeVignan.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and commission members. For the record, I'm Dave DeVignan from Schneider, DeVignan &amp; Leoni. I'm here representing Eli DeRoche, who is also known as MD South Coast Properties LLC, the property owners of this parcel of land. We are here this evening just to introduce, hopefully, a potential project that you will see later through a more intensive permitting process. So the site, it has an address at 72 Middle Road. It is two doors up from the police station. You're looking south to north. There are maybe three doors up. I think there's another house here, here, and then it's actually on the corner of Middle Road and an existing way, 40-foot wide, laid-out private way through a planning board plan. There's a dirt road, a gravel road that goes through that way and services a house back here at 76R. There's a barn associated with that house. This property has a house kind of squished up to Middle Road. Some people know it as the greenhouse property. You can see the greenhouses as you go by the property. There's a greenhouse still here, and then there's some barns in the back. The existing property has 5.56 acres, so it qualifies to meet the minimum lot size, which is 3 acres if you have sewer and water. We do have water supply at Middle Road. Sewer is available to us two doors down. We intend to tap into the sewer manhole near the police station and run a sewer line up the sidewalk in order to get onto the property. So this project will require sewer extension approval from the board selectmen. So having sewer and water, we have more than 3 acres of property to start with. We have 4.33 acres of upland. The wetland associated with the property is the very back end of the property, which butts at Cushinga River. The rest of it, this is a flag line that we had flagged, wetland line. The rest of it is all upland. You can see the contouring, the contours roll from Middle Road and roll all the way down to the river. So from a development standpoint, that's actually very, very good for us. We'll be developing in the central portion of the property and putting our stormwater system back here. What exists on the property for buildings would be wiped out. It would start with a clean slate. A lot of the property is open meadows and fields back here. Bringing that to the concept. The 45 bylaw allows three units per upland area. If you were to take 4.33 acres, you'd get slightly under 13 units, so we're at 12. I think it comes up to 4.98 or something like that. So we have a calculated upland area based upon a survey of the uplands and the wetland line established in the field. And what we're proposing to do is take that gravel road and make it a formal paved roadway with a cul-de-sac onto the property, sweeps onto the property. And as I said, all the buildings would be taken out, and then we would have six duplexes, two on the cul-de-sac and four on the roadway. I must say, in doing the exercise of putting this together, the setbacks do make it challenging. We're maintaining everything that's in the bylaw, 50-foot minimum. Setback requirements are from the property lines, 50 feet from the street. We're holding that from this layout line. So the buildings are greater than 50 from the layout line, 50 feet from the rear property line, 50 feet from Middle Road. The buildings have to also be 40 feet apart. So we have 40 feet between these four buildings here. Due to the topography, it's perfect to put a stormwater system down here. This is purely conceptual at this point, just so you know. We haven't got into the nuts and bolts of the grading schematic and utilities like we would for... This will be sort of like a subdivision approval, the way I look at it. So there is one caveat to the whole thing here is that the bylaw requires that you have 150 feet of frontage along a public way. We have, I think it's 142.97. We are short, we have 141.97. So we are short 8.03 feet from meeting the requirements. So we applied to the Board of Appeals for a variance due to the shape of the lot. And although we're on two streets here, we need to have frontage along a public way. So we're slightly less than 142. So we will be going before the ZBA next week with a variance request for the 8.03 that we're short. This is an aerial Google Earth image put behind it. You can see the existing structures here that would all be taken out, and then we'd start fresh and have the buildings placed in a subdivision-type format. This would improve the access for this house on the 76R. So he would have access off a new paved roadway. And again, we would bring the sewer, we may bring it back through the cross-country to service the backs of the houses, and the water would come right down the middle. There would be hydrants installed, et cetera, for fire protection. The roadway we're proposing would be 20 feet of pavement with capecot berms on both sides, that increasing to a 24-foot width around the circle. So that's a summation of the project. We're hoping that the planning board would welcome the project. And we know you can't endorse anything, but you can give us a thumbs up heading into the ZBA next week. If the ZBA were to fail for the variance, then we're short on the frontage. We'd have to come up with a creative way to add frontage to the property, which we haven't looked into.
Personally, I've looked at this, and I think it's a great idea. And we all got a set of the bylaw in front of us. If you all had a chance to go over it, it basically hits every point of the bylaw. Dave, how many bedrooms per unit? Are they all two-bedroom? Are they one-bedroom, two-bedroom?
They haven't been designed.
It was, future purposes, looks like two bedrooms each unit.
Each unit, every unit?
Every unit, two bedrooms, each one, yes. The bylaw states you can't have over that.
Right.
Right, so the, I don't think one is mandatory, but I think there's a limit that you can have only so many ones.
Yeah, there's a certain percentage of one.
I think it's 10%.
I think it was 10%.
So in this case...
It was a really low number.
In this case, that's 1.2, so it's one. So we did provide some illustrations of, I believe, in the package, of some styles of what they were looking for.
Yep, I think you did.
Yeah, and I did see those. I don't think it's in this package today, but I did see the possible plans. They look good.
Yeah, they're nice looking home.
Nice looking home, if that's what you're going with.
Absolutely. We want it clean, we want it nice.
Yeah.
Yes, definitely.
What's the process on the sewer connection permit? I know for a while the state wasn't allowing any new connections without some additional things come by the town. Are they able to do that?
Yes, because we have our comprehensive wastewater management plan completed.
It is approved.
Where we can't do that. Before, we were stuck in the mud.
Okay.
And I would congratulate or give the thanks to Kevin Gasper, a selectman, who pushed that through a few years ago.
Okay, but it's a possibility anyway without...
Yes, yes. We have done sewer connections on other parts of town where we had to run the line to get there. So I don't anticipate any hurdles in getting to be able to tie into the sewer. The biggest hurdle is they pave the area where the sewer manhole is, so we might have to directional drill into the manhole. Not the end of the world.
Yeah, that's not really a permitting issue. That's not the construction.
As far as the road, Dave, is this a paper road? Is this a private road? Is this a driveway? Who owns it? Who doesn't own it? What's the story with the road?
It's a private road that was laid out in a unique way way back a generation ago. So it's not public, and it's not a formal layout where the roadway has its own lotting, if you will, and there's frontage on both sides. It's laid out sort of like an easement, but it is laid out by a plan that was signed by the planning board. And actually, the layout goes all the way to the river.
Or the land court, too.
And there's some land court involvement, yes. These are land court lots on this side. Some of it is land court, yes. There's tons of monumentation.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this is the reason why we wrote the bylaw. Again, I welcome projects like this. This is, you know, I think it's a good thing for the town. Anybody else have any other questions, comments? I personally hope, I mean, you know I need eight feet. I'm hoping the ZBA can, you know, do their thing, be slightly lenient on it. But obviously up to them.
Slightly more than 5%.
Yeah, yes. I'm good. Anybody got any questions, folks, concerns?
Reasonable part, I think.
Excuse me.
It's just the water is for, you know, the two people that are on the other side of that way will have a better driveway than they had before. Maybe you should get somebody to plow the thing for them, so.
Yeah, is this eventually going to be a public road or is it going to say private road?
It would say private.
It would say private. And there'd be an association.
The association that would maintain the way, they would benefit from that.
Right. Now, I'm assuming that the barn and that building, I mean, they would have rights to access Middle Road from that.
Yes, absolutely. They have rights now. They wouldn't lose them. They benefit tremendously from this project.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I just want, can I just have your name for the record?
Eli, E-L-I, DeRoche, D-E-S-R-O-C-H-E-S.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, if you're looking for a thumbs up, you know, we can't vote on anything. But if you give a thumbs up, I'm in favor of it. Again, as usual, you did a great job so far explaining it and laying it slightly laid out. So I'm looking forward to the final step.
Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll see who's on the road.
Yeah, good luck. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Next, we have an A&R 175 Mad Pozy Road, map 10. Excuse me, lots 9, 9B, 12C. Applicant owner is Robert Con... sorry.
Conklin.
Conklin, sorry, my bad. Representative is Zenith Land Services LLC. Jonathan, can you introduce yourself, please?
Good evening. John Romanelli, Zenith Land Services, 1162 Rockdale Ave., in Bedford. Mr. Conklin's sitting behind me. He is the owner of the property here at 175 Mad Pozy Road. I highlighted the existing perimeter of what he owns in green. I also brought a copy of the assessors' map. It's a little difficult to see. We've got three parcels here, and I dashed in the former lot line here. This is parcel 9B on the assessors, this yellow one here. 12C is the big one. Down here, the odd shake is 9B, and he has title to all three lots. What he would like to do is to reconfigure the lot that he owns at 175 and create a new buildable lot for a future home. We do have the 150 by 150 box on each property. Highlighted in blue is the wetland line, so there's obviously a considerable amount of wetlands to the east. So we're creating a lot one, lot two. They both have the upland requirements of over 40 houses, correct? Because this one's at 41 and change, this one's at 42 and change. I think that's about it. Again, plenty of monumentation. There's stone walls with drill holes. We set a couple of rebar caps going down the new lot line. So anybody that's going to be looking at it, or what your plans are with it, Bob, if you've got family that's going to be, or you're just going to...
If I want to stay with my girlfriend, right now, nothing. But financially, if something goes west, I can sell it and/or if I want to downsize, build a small house. But I want to stay with her, so right now it's just separating.
So the three lots would become basically just two.
Two, correct. Buzzet Bay owns the remaining land out back over in this corner here. Buzzet Bay Coalition.
And right now, you're in this house here on the right?
175.
Yep.
Looks pretty straightforward. I mean, he's got the area, he's got the frontage. There's plenty of setbacks for the existing house.
I totally agree.
Sewer, sewer. Is, that's septic out there, isn't it?
Yes, there's no sewer and no water.
Is the septic for 175 on the proposed lot for 75?
Well, I wish, I see the well behind the house.
It's looking at the house. It's to the left of the house, I want to say 10 feet. And then the leaching area goes to the front yard, and the well is in the back.
So basically, this front square that you've got is where the...
Bob, do you have a second? Just point out, I think you're saying that, you know your well's back here.
Yeah, the well's back here. So this fence, is that the fence?
No, that's just a setback line.
Oh, okay. All right. Right to the, right there is the septic tank. There's a fence that goes like that along the wall. And then the leaching area is right up on here.
So everything is on that property?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes. I mean, this was once part of something else, and they built a couple houses over here.
Correct.
Okay, yep.
I would make a motion that we approve the plan estimate.
I second that.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can you get it, please?
Yeah, yes, Dave. Do you need to sign my word now?
Yeah.
It's two pages of that one.
All right. Thank you, Victoria. If you're recording, you can record.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
All right, moving right along. We have another informal meeting. 10094 Main Street, map 7, lot 15. Applicant Clem's Way Solar LLC, Rewild Renewables LLC. Owner is John Matthew, trustee, and Brooks liability trust. Representative is Bales &amp; Thomas Inc. Scope of the work is a proposed solar development.
Good evening, guys. Zachary Farkas, for the record. I'm with Rewild Renewables. I'm also the developer on the 211 Middle Road project that we've been working on. Not here to talk about that yet, but just to make sure you guys know that I'm talking about this project here. I'm here because session 1.5 of the bylaw requires an informal presentation or discussion of a project, requires a bill. This particular project is located just off Clem's Way. The formal address is 1094 Main Street. But just so some of you didn't refer to it as Clem's Way, it's a private way that runs right through the property. It's a 58-acre plus-or-minus parcel with forested residential land to the north and south. Residential development neighborhood, Cushing Lane neighborhood to the east. And then to the west, there's a small local cemetery. And then across Main Street, you've got Santos Farm, Fairhaven Land Trust, and some area over there. I call it a mixed-use parcel. It currently houses a mobile home park with approximately 50 units. That number might be changing a little bit here. There's also a landscaping, kind of construction bay garage at the very front of the property, immediately off Main Street. And then behind that, there are two hayfields, as well as a back lot that was a former hayfield that's grown in over the past 10 or 15 years. But ultimately, the parcel's been in relatively the same shape since the mid-'80s without very much change. Landowner does a lot of fiddling around back there, but the property itself has really contained those three uses: hayfields, mobile home park, and a construction bay for almost 40 years now. The solar project itself is looking to utilize the two hayfields as well as the back lot, totaling right around 17 acres total. It's about 4 acres, 4 acres, and a little less than 6 acres in the back lot. So for that total, we're looking at a total project size at about 5 megawatts AC, little under 6 megawatts DC. So right in that kind of medium-sized solar project that are kind of being developed really all over the Commonwealth the last 10 years or so. The design application that we have at about 95% done, kind of pending any feedback from the board, is informed by an ANRAD that was approved by the Conservation Commission in June of 2024. We had a technical review meeting in March of 2025, as required by the bylaw, with members of town, staff, fire, emergency, et cetera. And then obviously, tonight, we're here as a follow-up to the June 2nd informal meeting that provided the plans that I imagine you guys have in front of you. We consulted with, as we do for all projects, with Mass Historical, Natural Heritage, US Fish and Wildlife, FEMA, as well as the FAA at the federal level to kind of get feedback from other authorities with jurisdiction on solar projects. We performed site survey, obviously, a wetlands site review that was approved by Conservation Commission, and also the typical Phase 1 ESA confirming no hazardous materials exist on-site, as well as a geotech report that kind of confirms assumptions around soils and structural supports. From a design standpoint, per the bylaw, we've also performed glare studies, sound studies, screening evaluations, as well as your typical stormwater that you put together with the project permit plan set. So not unlike the other project that I've submitted before this board, it's, you know, we meet the bylaw in almost every manner. There are four waivers that are requested in the letter that we hope that you and Mr. Madden will consider as we go forward. But like the other project, our expectation is we submit the project, open a public hearing, and then continue our work on the engineering side before coming back to you guys. Hopefully, things will move faster with this project than the 211 Middle Road project. There's just a lot of engineering going on in the background for that one. This site, while doesn't have the kind of residential impact, you know, we want to make sure we take care of the residents that are on-site, that are ultimately the other lesses of our landowner. But other than that, the neighbors, we're going to be much more limited on this project, as well as kind of continued no impact from public ways and whatnot. So it's a tough site to develop, but we're trying to help the landowner maximize utilization of this land. So I'll stop there. I'm happy to answer any questions.
What are the waivers that you're going to be asking for?
Sure. The first waiver is with respect to 6-inch caliper trees, and the second with respect to 12-inch caliper trees per the bylaw. There's not a ton of tree clearing, if not any, on the first two, but there is some tree clearing in the back, and we're asking for a waiver from that requirement to identify and locate on the plan all those trees.
Have you started clearing back there already?
There was some clearing that happened about two years ago. Pronoun, "we" know, but our landowner was doing some clearing back there. He spoke with Mr. Rizendis, who was in charge of the, was it planning or conservation? Conservation. And stopped work and put up some stormwater features just to prevent any runoff while the site restabilized. It's been a couple of years now. So I don't see much impact back there. But as I said, the landowner and his family, they tinker around back there quite a bit, and I think they were excited about the solar project, started moving ahead with, you know, some firewood harvesting and whatnot from back there. But it is what it is. The third waiver was with respect to waiving the traffic study. As you guys know, for solar projects, very little traffic after construction starts. Because of the Clem's Way, private way, we can get deep into this site without parking or impacting much on Main Street. So our request is to waive that. And then finally, we're asking for some relief from the 150-foot side and rear setbacks that we'd like you guys to consider when you look at the existing topography and the existing tree areas to the north and the south. The reason we're asking, as you can see or outlined a little bit, is we're quite constrained by wetlands here, and we're really trying to limit any impact to the wetlands and wetland buffer areas. But again, these are things just to consider. We anticipate working with the board and Mr. Madden in a similar way that we did the last project to, you know, try to get this project to be kind of the least impactful to sensitive stakeholders, but also the, you know, optimized for everybody involved. The first three waivers are the same from the original project, the first project, Middle Road, that were granted, and this fourth one is the only unique one.
Is there a house or something to the east of that back lot?
Cushing, so this is the large lot at the end of Cushing?
Yeah, I'm thinking, where are the houses around that back development? The front part, I'm pretty familiar with that.
Sure.
The back part, I've never been back there.
Okay, I can ask our guys to expand the plan a little bit to show Cushing Lane to the east, so you can see.
Yeah, show the residence.
A lot of the houses.
Yeah, show, if there are any houses that are close, it would be nice to have them.
Yep.
At least approximately.
Absolutely.
So what are the setbacks from 1, 2, and 3?
If you look at the plan, there's a dotted line that shows the 150-foot setback in here. So you can see the area that we're asking to add some panels that would be right here, just right here. And the reason is that all this existing forested area.
Looking at half of it for relief.
Yeah, there's a good portion of that is within the setback on that back piece.
Yeah, we really, these thin rectangular-shaped parcels, as you guys know, kind of really suffer from large setbacks. So we're asking for some relief there.
That'd be something the board has got to consider. There's a couple of wells that service the mobile homes on that. It's a public water supply well and a backup well.
That's right.
I believe the DEP is typically looking for setbacks from those wells.
Yeah, the center field houses the wells that you're talking about. The landowner already has approval from conservation to move that well from the center field to this area, just in between the two arrays. So that would be part of...
Both of the wells?
Yeah, that would be, we'll call it contingent on the project. He doesn't want to spend money to move the wells right now, but if the project gets...
You'll have to apply to DEP. They'll have to approve it as a new source for water for that. That's a little bit of a process.
It totally is. It totally is. And we're just trying to kind of figure out which chicken goes before which egg. And...
And that's 100-foot buffer on that?
No, it's 180, I believe. For that, it's 180 feet, I think, where the DEP doesn't want anything at all within that 180 feet. And I don't know if the interim well-protection area, which is 600 feet in diameter, has got any further restrictions. But yeah, that would seem like that's an issue that's got to be dealt with, too, besides your setback issues.
Yeah, it's, you know, some of these properties have, in a similar way to the other project, where we have to move the sewer line. It's a similar way where we hope, if we can move to approval, we have it conditionally back well we moved prior to construction starting. And so that movement, the permanent of the movement of the wells has already advanced globally and at the state level. And ultimately, the landowner is not going to move the well if we don't move forward with the project. But if we do move forward with the project, he'll move the well prior to commencement.
There... Again, DEP's got quite a number of regulations relative to public water supply wells.
I've done a fair amount of work in my career developing solar with water districts. We've done one on Yountucket. We've done one on Onset over in Wareham. So very familiar with 180-foot setback as well as the extended setback area.
It would seem like, at the very least, it would have to, the project would hinge on a contingency that those wells get moved before any work could start clearing.
Absolutely.
And/or otherwise.
Yeah, I think certainly DEP regulations would require that. Because like you said, that protection area wouldn't allow equipment paths, roads, et cetera. So that would have to move first. Just the cost associated. The landowner is trying to avoid...
No, no, I understand that it's expensive. I'm just pointing out that it's a process.
Yep, well aware of it.
Not necessarily an easy process.
Seems in the setback, you're really looking for a lot of relief.
Yeah.
You're not just looking for a little 10 feet, 20 feet. I mean, there's one here, this section right here. You're almost looking for, you know, 120 feet or 130 feet of relief.
Yeah, it's a big ask to start with. And I think, you know, as we get through the peer review process, as we get on-site and kind of get a feel for where the actual residents are located.
Yeah, it's just over here and across the back. And then this is...
And over there.
Right, yep. And that's a fairly sizable piece over there, too. I don't know...
And you have 1052 solar field right here.
I think we're going to need to see where the adjacent houses are, especially where you're asking for relief from the setback requirements from my end.
So from the first solar panel to these mobile homes, we're looking at 75 feet it would take. Yeah, same with here. Just 150 feet from here to here.
No, I think it's just that 150 feet from the property one.
So... Right, but just 150 feet from here to here.
Yeah, so this would be the setback.
Would the property continue to be under one ownership?
Yes, sir.
So in order to put the panels that close to the backs of those mobile homes, he'll have to be satisfied, the owner will have to be satisfied that's okay with or without screening?
Yeah, we spoke during the technical review meeting certainly about communicating to those landowners. And I know that, or excuse me, those renters, the mobile pads. And I know the landowner's been in touch and communicating what's going on and posting on the board.
So you don't have any screening in between there?
I think we have, we're going to have some screening. This plan is meant to just be able to show us a little bit more.
Those panels all face south, too. So that's going to be pretty evident from the backs of those homes. Interesting. There may be a few of those people that show up.
Yeah, we've been trying to communicate and continue to kind of hash that out outside the public hearings. But we're having conversations with people and making sure they've got a heads up that this is something...
Yeah, because the homes themselves are privately owned.
The pads, the pads are not, the homes are.
Yeah, the homes are privately owned. The site is...
Right, I get that.
Yes, yep.
That's interesting.
So the homes are privately owned, but the pads that they own...
Yeah, so they own the mobile home. Not the pad that they... Yeah, it's like an HOA.
The connection to that back field or the easterly field, I guess, is that a wetlands fill?
No, it's an existing crossing. It's very narrow. And you can just see, just visually with this small-scale plan, that we had been speaking with police and fire about reducing that to 12 feet to limit any impact to wetlands. So right now, it's not impacting any wetlands. It's an existing road to get out to that back lot. But it's very wet to the north and the south there. So there's not a ton of room to expand or fill.
And to enter these, it's off of Main Street?
It's off of Main Street. The existing access driveway, there's a number of driveways off of it.
Yeah, it goes by the old milking barn right here.
Yeah, there's a number of, almost that whole area is paved. And so you're pushing any utility equipment up behind that barn?
Where's the brook?
Right here.
Okay.
It's just on the...
Right here.
Yep.
So the barn's right there. They're going to want to come in alongside the barn?
Right, this is all wide open right here. It's a big gravel driveway.
Got you. So they want to come in this way, then access each one off the same road?
Yep, the intermittent stream is there. There's an existing crossing there. And so you want to keep all that being voltage and electric equipment in that area. And then per the requirements of the town, we've got kind of individual ring roads around each system. And we talked to police and fire about that, and they were not comfortable waiving that. So that's another, a lot of space that's getting taken up.
Yeah, we wouldn't waive that either.
Yep.
Now, the, this, the central area, the drainage all appears to go down towards that pond that's shown on the mobile home parcel?
It all moves west.
Does it? Where is the outlet for your detention pond in that pond that's on the other parcel? We've had trouble with no outlet detention ponds before.
I know this. Yeah, there's details, if you go to the next sheet, that should have details on each subterranean.
So this is the one pond here?
Yep.
Yeah, that's the detention pond. And so, and the stream's down here. So whatever comes off of this piece, it's going to end up down on the stream. And it's not going to go on anybody else's property.
Right, is that so?
This, yeah, this pond and then your detention pond, I'm looking for where the ultimate outlet is for both of those. I guess one, I can't tell by this, but I don't know whether this existing pond drains your detention pond, which goes somewhere else. Where does that water go now?
Yeah, I can make a note of that. There is the stream that runs, or kind of the intermittent stream bed that runs this way and continues to carry water to the east to that intermittent stream bed that runs north and south, just along the east river.
It's over here.
So it's something I can look at more detail for full ones.
The next page will show you the...
Yeah, this one, I understand. And I'm just concerned at this point is this overflows in this some kind of a shallow wetland area. Is that going to find its way down there?
Or over here?
Yeah, I mean, that, too. I mean, that would be the impact of that central area. It goes down from there. This one's probably not a big deal. Is this, does this property all slope down towards Main Street? Or does a portion of it slope towards the back area?
There's a portion, there's a portion that drains into this large wetland here.
Where is the high point in this particular area? I mean, it's pretty, if you go up this road, it's pretty, it's pretty constant uphill up until you get to the very back portion.
Yep, and everything kind of falls off this way. There's the low here in the wetland, and then from the fields, all coming back. This is all wet up here as well.
So all of this is going to end up down there?
Yep, and running straight back.
And over here?
Yep.
Does it work and drain back? I don't know. I thought this pond was just kind of a pothole, if you will, in the middle of the terrain. I don't recall there being any drain from that pothole at all. Adjacent flooding, that's where the... So I would say, you know, when you get to your final thing, that needs to be something that's considered and addressed.
Totally. And that's where, you know, almost, I'd say, if all, if not almost all, the efforts we focused on the other project is all adjacent flowing during construction and post-construction. What's taken so long is making sure during the relatively short construction period, we have the coverage from a stormwater control standpoint that we need. And then it only gets better when the site stabilizes, right? We have a similar situation...
It's better, yeah, it's better.
Well, we know it gets better, but the challenge being that it's hard to it's hard to control during that construction period when your conditions are fair and poor. And this, for this site, it is somewhat similar in that we have two fields with no material grading, no tree clearing. And even the trees in the back are quite young, quite small. So we kind of have those advantages of not clear-cutting mature forests.
Now, this back area, where... So you're showing this detention, this pond back here with an outlet onto adjacent property. This one goes to the wetlands that's on the property. That one goes to the wetlands on the property. But you've got one, two areas that are going to ultimately drain onto neighboring properties. So those will be sensitive spots.
Yeah, there's, you know, going to be the sensitive points that we're going to have to...
And you're asking for relief from the setback in that area also. So I would be looking very closely at what's going on there, especially in regards to a waiver for setback. Victoria, the setback that's in the bylaw, is that a zoning setback that would require ZBA approval? Or is that something that the board can just waive?
I would have to double-check on that. I think there might be something in the bylaw that says the planning board has the right to waive...
Yeah, that's all I'm asking, you know, this is...
Yeah, that's something I would definitely want to touch base with our zoning enforcement, zoning enforcement officer before I make a call on that. Yeah, because I'm not 100%.
I would be interested in what the response to that is.
Okay.
That will roll into whether or not we can even give you a waiver on the setbacks.
Yeah, I accept what Victoria said, but also because the solar setbacks are greatly larger than the typical development setbacks for residential that have existed in the bylaw, it was already that it's in the hands of the planning board. That's why we asked it.
Okay, well, we'll clarify that and go from there. Now, did you say that the police and fire have looked at that 12-foot-wide path to the back area?
That's what we were talking about with them. We don't have their full comments back because we haven't submitted the application package yet. But we did preview that with them, and we got kind of a verbal willingness to look at it. And, you know, we want to see to see through the, the full context of whether or not they're accepting it or not.
With that path that's going up there, would that get unstable when it's wet or-
It's existing and it's not in the group, in the best shape right now. So we would certainly improve it to the point that it would not become unstable after construction. But it's at the point right now where it's one of those existing wetland crossings-
Yes, they just used it to get back and forth to the hay field.
A day like today, you don't want to go out there.
Sort of widening that would infringe on wetlands.
Yes, some more wetland impacts, yeah. Or some wetland impacts. We've, we've avoided all wetland impacts right now with this first iteration.
Hey, was it stone along the sides of that path?
It, it looks like over the years, it's been reinforced with, with more and more stone. But it's basically, it's basically a gravel enforced woods road is how I describe it right now. It's not a structurally constructed road. It's a-
Tractor, it was for tractors to get back there.
Used to milk the cows here when I was a kid.
Did you really?
Yep.
No.
Used to do it with clun.
Yep. That's been a while.
Any other comments?
No, I mean, the general, I mean, this is just general discussion. So, I mean, those are the areas that I would look at as a little project critical.
Yeah, I'd say one of the biggest areas is that, I mean, one of the reasons why we redid the solar bylaw setbacks were a critical part of creating the solar bylaw.
Yep.
So personally, that's a big deal.
Yeah, that's, that's-
Well, that's why I'm here, just to have those conversations. Sometimes when I read the bylaw, I'm not sure full intent, full sphere of the bylaw, but I'm hearing the feedback.
It would be nice, as Rick said, to have a better view of the surrounding property, how far away the homes are on one side, on all sides. But we obviously know how closely they're on one side. But let's set to the west and to the south, north, excuse me. It'd be nice to see what, you know, where the nearest dwellings are.
Especially on the east side.
Yeah.
I mean, even if it's just, you know, off of, off of the available aerial mapping and approximately located on-
It's a requirement for site, for the site plan review portion of the special permit. So I'm sure it will be on our full plan set. I think we're just trying to focus on a concept plan right here. But, um, yeah, we can plot those, plot those easily.
Are there any battery storage on these facilities?
Similar to the other project, all projects in Massachusetts require battery storage. There-
They do require battery storage?
Yes. We're required to put batteries on every solar project. It's a, it's been in the smart regulations since 2019-ish, 2019, 2020, right around that is when you see the shift.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
I don't. That was the, you know, the, I knew the setbacks was the big ask and I wanted to get that feedback and I've got it.
Yeah, that's the big nut right there.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's a classic balance between starting with a big site, having a ton of wetlands on the site, wanting to balance all of our goals.
And I want a little bit more on the screening between what comes way, mobile homes and the site.
Yeah.
I'd have a better idea of exactly what you're planning on putting there.
Yep.
Whether anybody comes in to object to it or not, I'd still like to see some screening there depending on, you know, how close.
Yep, we're waiting on the, that final glare study to get back that is required for your application. Glare, somewhat counterintuitive, is usually to the east and west when the sun gets really flat, not to the due south. So even though your instinct would tell you there's going to be a lot of glare, I don't think there'll be any glare for the panels. If there was, that would immediately have us put screening in to make sure we block all that. So what we're talking about is, is truly kind of a visual screen. So that's part of the reason our landlord's been reaching out to those folks to talk about what the best way to do it is. But, yeah, Robin, clear?
The, the only other thing I would say is on the wells.
Yes.
This DEP is going to require a no-build area around those wells.
That's right.
Like nothing other than water supply related.
Correct.
When you come back, I think that even though they're not moved, there should be a spot on this plan that shows where that no-build radius is.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I, this looks pretty filled with solar arrays and mobile homes.
Do you mean for-
I think that, I think that's an issue.
Do you mean for the newly, the proposed newly located wells or the existing or both?
Well, yeah, yeah. I mean, it-
I just wanted to make sure because obviously the existing wells would cover or remove from-
I think, I think the existing wells, at this point, you should, they should be shown on the plan.
Yeah.
And if there are any protective radiuses required by the state, they should be shown on that. And we should be seeing the proposed location of the wells with the appropriate no-build areas shown there.
Great.
I think that at the very least is going to impact some of your build out on these solar arrays.
Yep, we have that. We have both. And so I'll make sure they're properly plotted and, and set back. As I said, the new location of the well has already been permitted through Conservation. And so we can show you that exact location.
Not worried about Conservation. It's, it's, DEP's got to, got to agree that it has the appropriate setbacks and it's got the appropriate-
Yes, sir.
You know, withdrawal rate to supply those homes. God, we've got a whole book of requirements. But, you know, again, with the, with those, those locations that Conservation has approved, those proposed locations should show on this plan. And if there is a no-build zone around that required by the DEP water system regulations, that needs to show on here too.
Yep.
Even though it's proposed.
Yep.
Because if it's not moved, well, then the plan doesn't work.
That's right.
Okay?
Yep, very much.
You good?
All right.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. So I think we're going to stay right there for the second, right?
It's another second, maybe a little bit longer.
So are we opening the public hearing?
No, you just call it back to order.
Call it back to order, all right.
Depends on how much water gets drawn out of the well. The more, the more the water gets drawn out, the higher the capacity of the well, the bigger that. Yep.
So the more water that well puts out, the bigger the profit goes?
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's a huge well that beats the whole town, the well, the protective radius is bigger than if it's just for one house. And for 60 or for 50 homes, there's going to be a number.
Good cycle.
There's going to be a number. I, I don't remember whether it's 150 or 180 feet, but it's related to the withdrawal from well that services, in this case, those mobile homes.
That's correct.
Got you.
I just wanted, we're not going to open the hearing for Middle Road, right? Because we don't have a member present, I don't want to lose a voting member.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Sorry, I was just hoping that we're not going to open the hearing.
So just to clarify, the hearing is already opened. We don't formally close the hearing. Sorry, I just to clarify for anyone listening. So we typically call the hearing back to order and then, you know, if you don't want any deliberation on it because we're missing a member, we can continue without deliberation.
That's right. If you guys are comfortable with the, the monroll, considering that we're filming, then I have no issue with it. But I just wanted to bring it up just to make sure we don't lose a member for a situation where we're not planning to discuss too much.
No, understood. That makes sense.
Thank you.
All right. So public hearing, continued site plan review and special permit for 211 Middle Road, mat 23, lots 3998, 299B, applicant Rewild Renewables LLC, Representative Bill Zentoni Inc., scope of the work is a proposed six-megawatt solar photovoltaic developer. So we're back in open meeting. We really, they want to continue?
Yes, that's the request.
You request to continue to the next or two?
We're, we were hoping to have everything wrapped up today. We verbally concluded efforts with Bill. And so we have to make an update to our plan set to cover the final change to the stormwater plan that Bill asked us for, to cover that 10-year storm, that kind of one last item that was open. So that plan was completed. It'll be on its way to this board and to Mr. Madden. Now, tomorrow morning, very, very quickly. And so the, the expectation is prior to the next meeting, we'll have the all-clear letter from Mr. Madden and then we'll come in and ask this board, as well as Conservation Commission, to close.
Okay. But because this is a public hearing, there's nobody here. If there's anybody on Zoom or they have any questions, I'm willing to take those questions. Is everybody, anybody out on teams in regards to the Middle Road project?
I don't think there's anybody on there.
Yeah.
Nobody on there?
No.
Okay. I can't tell if there's anybody. The other Zoom one, I could tell if there are people on it, but this one I can't. All right. There's nobody there. We're going to continue. So the next meeting is now-
Is now going to be June 26th because we just have to change our central a little bit due to board member availability. So we'll have a quorum for that. I believe you all said you could make the 26th, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And I believe Steve responded as well. He can make the 26th. So we should have a full board that night.
Great.
Okay.
June 26th?
Correct.
Okay. Take a motion to continue this public hearing to June 26th.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
See you June 26th.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Let me just text Steve as well. Okay. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss? Nope? Crickets? Okay. No other businesses come in in the last 48 hours. Our next meeting will be June 26th. Take a motion.
Take a motion.
That adjourned the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.